Call to order. Roll call.
I'm over here.
You're here.
Yeah. Mary?
Me? Yes, I'm here.
Chrissy?
Here.
Andy?
Here.
Wanda?
Here.
Susan?
Here.
Thank you ma'am.
Pleasure to be here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we come, the board cannot take action on comments regarding non agenda items. We do now, if we value public input, will consider comments of future action. Chairperson, President, Officer Shell has the exclusive authority to recognize speakers from the public during the point of discussion and before is taken for each agenda item within the agenda. Although there's no time limit, we respect the restricted for us to be within three minutes per speaker for an agenda item. Board training, the attorney is four miles out, running just a little bit late. Strategic planning, we'll table that till after. The adoption of public safety specs, you want to do that one?
Yep.
Let's do that.
Alright, so each of you have, I think, a staff report describing, describing the project along with the actual grading plans and specifications. So this is a little background, the public contract code basically requires that the board adopts or approves, AKA the plans and specs, before we are allowed to advertise them. So I am looking at number one for your approval of the plans and specs, so we can begin advertising. Number two, your approval of the phase one, so this is phase one, which is all of the site work. Approval of the phase one budget, which is 1.5 million dollars. Number three, to authorize me to, once bids are open, then we have an apparent, we have an apparent, oh, responsible bidder, so authorize me to execute that contract instead of having to come back to the board in another meeting. And then lastly, to allow me, within the phase one budget, to execute any change orders in the future. So I am happy to answer any questions.
What was the engineer's estimate?
Engineer's estimate was one point, it was 1.46, I believe, and we rounded it up to 1.5. And pretty much for this phase, most, except for probably a very small portion, the vast majority of it will be able to be charged against the change agreement that we have.
Didn't they give one point?
Something like that. So we have a draft contract that our attorney provided, so that would be the contract that we use when we award it, yes.
Now, if there's any change orders.
So if there's like a site condition that pops up that requires some sort of deviation from the scope, I'm basically looking for the authority to issue a change order to allow that change, just as long as we're still in over, as long as there's not a change order that takes over the budget, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a lot to try and just look at real quick, like approve, but I don't mind if we. Right, right.
Few building.
We did so many of these at the last minute.
I know, it'd be nice to have a little bit of time to read it, just to, just to see if there was some red flag in there that you were like, what? But.
I believe they said to run on a Monday.
I mean, yeah, that's been, we did send it out a couple days ago. I think Monday morning.
I emailed it off you secondly as well.
Yep.
I got it.
Do you expect multiple bids on this?
I would hope so.
Yeah.
I mean, I.
What about the rate where you got no bids?
Well, no, that one we got, we got three, we got three or four bids, yeah, yeah.
So where are we at? I mean, is this ready to go? You're going to put it out for a bid right now?
Yeah, you said that last week.
Yes, yeah, I mean, this is, this is already, the only thing pending is we just submitted our encroachment permit to Caltrans, which we expect to get with no problem because Caltrans has already reviewed our project in the county's conditional use permit process. So none of their comments are a surprise, so they should easily be able to issue that and then the county will issue us a grading permit. But even before we get those two things, we're going to go ahead and.
List of it?
The third, we're tomorrow, today's Thursday.
Today's Thursday.
Tomorrow we'll start advertising and then we'll have a mandatory bid lock on the 16th of April. And then two weeks after that, there's what we do.
Looking at this contract, Adam. Alternate bid, Caltrans hasn't approved the access.
Which means just.
Yeah, they have, they've approved the secondary access as an emergency vehicle accessible.
Yeah. So ultimately, we're going to go with. Open their bid number two. Access material.
Because we discussed it and that could have, it could really make a number of different. It could go in a number of different phases, it could have gone in any of the phases because it's not directly impacting it. This is not exactly at this location that the building's going to go. This is off to the end of one property. And so basically, we're doing a bid alternate to see if there's a good price during this phase that we can just take care of some other things.
Okay.
On the, on the site, but not necessarily directed for the building.
Not by final two days on the contract?
Mm-hmm.
With the day to damages and what?
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
A day?
Yes.
Thank you.
I learned my lesson, I learned my lesson hard. Yes.
Is there a, oh, never mind, I just lost my train of thought. An incentive reward?
No. The incentive is to get paid by us for doing the job.
Okay, because I have the incentive before that.
Yeah, I believe in that, I believe in sticks, not carrots.
Better have a big one. You know I'm going to go through this page by.
As you absolutely should.
This is exciting.
Margaret, we're going to jump back to you.
Eight times.
Are you in water?
Oh, thank you.
Over here, it says remove degrees inside. Over here, it says store it on the side.
Okay, so my request would be for approval and, you know, if you have questions, I can go back to the engineer.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the public safety center plans and specs.
And the budget and authorization. I don't know if you can want it.
Yeah.
Yeah. There was no. There was something on my side.
There was the, yeah, yeah. There was a, some kind of, you know, process. Any more discussion on this topic? All appear. All opposing? Motion carried. Alright, move back to the board training number.
At this time, if you don't mind, I'd like to exercise my right for public comment.
Yeah.
Public comment on the agenda items.
Yeah. This is the public table.
Okay, well, I'd like to comment on the public comment, then it was sped over pretty quickly and no one in the public was asked if they had public comment.
So just like again, the public comment section that we normally have at regular board meetings is for non agenda items and we don't take non agenda item comments at special board meetings.
That's why I'm not giving one, I'm talking about my opportunity to give one. Now I've been heard, thank you. I'm satisfied.
Okay, to board training and legal counsel.
Yes, and so for those of you who have not met or spoken with our legal counsel, this is Margaret Long. Princess Long, located in Reading. And worked with her for a couple of years. And Margaret's done a number of trainings at CSDA conferences and other conferences. And is very well versed in assisting boards of directors, special districts and city councils, et cetera. Maybe, do we want to do some brief introductions?
Brief introductions, just throwing out everyone. So are you married?
Uh-huh. Mary is a retired attorney.
Uh-oh, right, check me, I like it.
Long retired.
One's not turning, oh, isn't it?
I'm Chrissy Gorbitt, I am a retired electric and gas operations.
Andy Myers, long time resident.
And Bill.
Andrew.
Oh, that's right.
Is it my turn? It is. I'm a warrant collector for the South Grove. I'm retired from the school district, I did attendance accounting for the ADA. And I currently work for the school district, I'm in the Forest Service.
Susan Duran.
I work for the district and serve in.
Oh, can you use Mark?
Well, this is a really good group to have together, I mean, you've got expertise all over the board. Adam Druzy, I'm Margaret Long, I'm attorney, I've been working and doing, representing kind of small rural municipalities for about twenty-one years. And it's like, you know, I love coming and talking about, you know, how a district should run and kind of some of the general concepts of it. I would say that I prefer this to be more of a discussion, I mean, we have kind of a great setting to have a discussion, so please do not feel shy about jumping in and asking questions, but we're giving you real life examples of things that are going on that we can work through and figure out how to come to a solution. But, you know, I find that when folks get elected or appointed to these positions, you know, you come in with very little training, with very little support, very little guidance, and you're asked to manage a large budget, really big projects and oversee, you know, basically the running of a de facto city. And so it really is a good opportunity to just take a time out and kind of remember what your roles are, what our roles are and how we're supposed to keep things going, so that it can give you a little bit more comfort when you come and sit here, that you know exactly where your roles are, what you're supposed to do and how you're supposed to do it. And then kind of talk briefly about some of the overriding laws that surround how special districts operate. The, you know, again, I wasn't given a pugis sign here, they just kind of come and talk about the role of the board, the role of staff, and then kind of, you know, again, because I'm a lawyer, I can't, I always got to sneak in a little bit of, you know, the laws that is really important for you to know as you are doing your function on the, on the district. So first thing, role of the board, that is, you know, again, you come in here, you have, you know, you have no training and you're asked to kind of start making decisions right away. It's really important to remember that your role is not to run the district. That is your goal of your general manager and your staff, they run the district. You guys are the bosses, you oversee the district. And there's a really very important distinction between the two of those. You are not day-to-day operations, you're not in the minutia, you are looking at the bigger picture. And so it's really important that when you come to the board, you look at setting that direction. That is your number one goal, is to set the direction of the district as it goes forward. I, you know, I know you guys have a, I think, a strategic planning session this afternoon and I couldn't be more happy that you guys are doing that, because that is really the number one function of you as the board, is to set those goals and policies. Typically, when you are doing some sort of direction setting, you look at, looking at creating a mission statement and you look at creating a vision statement. And those are what the overarching goals of your, your organization is. We just, just spent about three days in strategic planning with the city of Susanville. And the longest conversation they had was about how they were going to set their mission statement. And that's the why, like, why are we here, why are we, you know, functioning? And they, they spent about a full day talking about it. They ultimately came to a vision statement of working together to engage the unique and diverse population to build a community of the highest quality for the present and future generations. So it sounds kind of simple, right, and kind of sounds, and I'm from New York, so I don't like things that waste time. And I also, you know, like, I don't like to spend a lot of time on things that were pretty fast paced. And so, you know, spending a full day to come up with that one sentence seems like a huge waste of time for me, when I think about it. But as I watched the process unfold, it was less about coming up with the words, but we weren't coming out with the priorities for the jurisdiction. So they spent about an hour talking about the word diverse, they want a diverse population. And then whether that has political meaning, whether that means they want to support the current people that are there or they want to encourage growth, whether they want to look at development versus sustainability. I mean, it looks at kind of the goal of them, and they, they decided, you know, instead of just being a sustained community, they want to be a growth community. And so they're looking at attracting people from other jurisdictions, attracting people to come there, looking at building. Whereas, you know, I have some jurisdictions that are like, we, you know, we're happy the way we are, we just want to maintain. And so again, those are the things that come out of it. They, this community, again, they looked at present and future generations, they were looking for sustainability was one of their priorities versus survival mode. And I know your district has been in survival mode for a long time. You have, you know, when you're dealing with a big situation or incident, you go into survival mode and it's just day-to-day operations and how they can function. As you come out of that mode, as you come out of survival mode, it's really important to figure out, as a group of five who's been given the responsibility to provide directions for this community, to figure out what direction you want to go. Where are your priorities, what are you looking to do, what do you see this community looking like in five years, 10 years and 15 years? And if you don't have those conversations, all you're going to be doing is approving checks and looking at contracts, which is not what you're here to do. You're here then to have a bigger role than that. And I, I'm glad we have a lot of folks that, you know, came from, from outside business and understand, you know, you know, higher level functioning, it's going to make it a lot easier. But it's really important to look at again, setting your mission and then also setting your vision statement, which is, which is the what. What do we want to accomplish, what, how would we view our, our jurisdiction as successful, what would make it successful? And looking at the future, because again, if we're just in survival mode and we're just looking at how to write a check and how to balance, you know, how to balance our budget, we're not, we're not in that mode of looking how to, to direct, set the direction and you're not doing your role as the board to set that direction. I looked for yours to see if you guys had a vision and mission statement, which you kind of do. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm too, too ahead of you now. What does IGCSD look like? So you have these on your website. And it's, you know, they're, they're kind of starting to be your vision and your mission statement. Indian Valley Community Service District supplies water and sewer services to the community of Greenville, Tarrasville and Crescent Hill in the vicinity of Indian Valley located in Bloomis County, California. Okay, so that's what you do, but, I mean, do you view your role as an organization in just being a supplier of water sewer and, but water and sewer services, is that what you do or is it bigger? Are you looking at it being a bigger, is your role development, is your role rebuilding, is, you know, what else are you looking to do? Because right now, if I were to read this, I would say your vision is sustaining and your vision is service supplied. You're supplying services to the community, that's it, that's where it ends. But I'm hearing, you know, some of the great projects that are being worked on, looking at some contracts that are coming through and I don't think that's what you're doing, I think you're looking bigger. You're looking at rebuilding, you're looking at development, you're looking at, you know, these bigger concepts. So again, it's really important for you five to have that conversation and figure out what you want for the future. Because if it is just service supplies, then your job, again, will be quite easy. I mean, again, you sign a couple checks and you write a couple, write a couple policies and you're off and running. But if you really do have a bigger goal, it's important to develop that now. Also, kind of what we do, again, it's, it's written, again, it's fine, you have a good start, you have an idea of what you do, but you've written very much in terms of like survival mode concept. We are going to supply services, we're going to deliver fresh water, we're going to keep the streetlights on. So again, if your goal is to keep the lights on, you're good to go, but if your goal is to have something bigger, then it's important to have that, because again, that is your number one role. Your role is not to run the city, your role is to develop this big picture of what you want this community to look like. And so that's really important to understand, that is your primary goal. Again, I know you guys are getting into strategic planning, it's like, and the strategic planning is the best way to do it. Again, as I said, this is where you develop what you're going to do. And this is where you give your direction to your staff of what you want to see from them. If you are in the minutia of what they do on a day-to-day basis, you're missing your role. Your role is to develop this plan. And a plan is not just, I want you to apply for this grant or I want you to develop this project. That's, that is, that's part of it, that's the result of it, but it is, it's a bigger issue, you are setting your priorities. Typically, we recommend when you're doing strategic planning, you look at setting five priorities for about a five-year period. Because if you, if you just have your general manager following every little, you know, grant or project or thing, you're not really, again, you're not focused in the organization and you're going to burn out your staff. Because if every time something jumps up, it's all of a sudden now your top priority, we don't have a goal. So it's really important to sit down and say, what are our priorities? Typically, you'll see, you know, something like economic development and then under that you'll see housing reconstruction or bringing in new businesses. And then you'll see something like maintaining a staff. And having, you know, how are you going to maintain staff and under that you'll have that. But again, look about having three to five priorities that you really want to achieve in the next five years. And then also look at what resources you're going to allocate to it, and do you have those resources to allocate it to it? There's nothing worse than a strategic plan that is like great, great ideas, pie in the sky, wonderful things, and nobody has the money or time or staff to do it. So again, you look at setting those priorities, allocating your resources and then making sure, again, you know, you have these public meetings, the community's involved, they can have a say in it. And then also that you have accountability. And what that means is you need to have deliverables set. So when you're setting your strategic planning, you need to have who's going to be in charge of it, what resources they have and when you want it done by. That is your job to set those priorities. It is then the job of staff to take those priorities and execute them. Again, you're not involved in the execution, you know, you have to remember, you are hired to be the boss, you're not hired to be the worker. So again, your job is to set those priorities, is to allocate the resources and then set timelines that you need to have them delivered by. And it is appropriate and okay to ask for updates. It is very encouraged to have a mechanism where you can constantly see where they are in the project. But once you've set these priorities and once you've set the goals for the district, it is not okay to come in and tear them apart or stop them from happening. And again, I know you guys haven't set your strategic plan yet, so you haven't gotten there, but I work with a lot of jurisdictions that they work really hard, they set these plans, they set these priorities and then all of a sudden, it's just pick, 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 let's have, let's break them down. And that's not the goal, your goal is to help, you know, you've set these, is to help encourage and support staff in executing them. So priority number one is to set the policy, set the strategic plan, set the goals for your jurisdiction. Do you guys feel as an organization, you have done that yet?
I think, I think we've started. We've conducted probably the two or three different strategic planning sessions and had that agendized a couple of times at board meetings. We've, we've got five that have created a little bit of constemnation, I think, right now. Is, is what do they really mean, you know, and the details of that, right? Our number one priority is build back the fire hall, I think, although lean entirely, agree, agrees on that. The second one is improving the water and sewer services, you know, for, for the valley. The third one, I think, was parks and rec, and we have a, a separate board, the Indian Valley Parks and Rec. But our support of that, we own the parks, they own the front of the, the programs. So building a relationship between the boards and building, you know, trust for that, that things will move forward with that, that's, that's part of that third one. The fourth one was the city center. And the fifth one was housing and alternate development in the valley. So those five things are what we've written down and, and had discussions on, you know, in strategic planning session. And Amy, want to add to that?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Policy things. I'm looking at, yeah, we're looking at the policy.
As far as.
Yeah, kind of, right, that was advertised correctly, with me anyway, but the last two projects on there, housing and the community center, I was kind of, kind of dropped off a little bit.
Evolved.
Yeah, or, yeah, yeah, it just.
Contingent on funding and whatnot.
Yeah, it seems like a big gamble, we put a lot of money out trying to get a large grant, that grant, not going to happen. So I don't know where this funding comes from, I'm not that familiar with grants and things like that, but I don't think they're, they're thrown out real easy by right now. So I'm just think that we should be careful on the amount of money we've put out towards those projects. Housing and the communities, those two projects seem, seem like a bit of a gamble to me.
But I think the, the point is, you know, we identified five things, right? And, and can, can those be altered? Absolutely, right? But can, can they be reorganized, obviously in the last meeting when they were agendized, we talked about that. Or actually, we, they weren't agendized, we talked about that. But anything to add to that one?
I don't know, if we approve a project and we're going to put, I don't know, I don't know, some project, any project, then we can't, we can't have details or can't want details of what's happening or how it's going to happen or how we're going to pay for it or.
Great question, because that's exactly wrong, you, you can't ask for all of that and you should ask for all of that. So the concept, and, and I like it, you have five plans, you have five strategic, and they, and they seem appropriate and achievable. Those are kind of the two things we look at, is appropriate for the community, does it fulfill the mission of the community, which again, we're still kind of figuring out with the mission, what you guys visualize, how do you see this community? But it, looking at what you have, it, it seems to achieve that. And is it, is it deliverable? And the answer is, we're looking at finances, we're looking at staff time, we're looking at community resources, we're looking at communities' desires, so we're looking at all this together, we get our five ideas and we put them together. Putting them on the paper is step one, that's, you're not done with your strategic plan when you do that. The next thing you're looking at is resource allocation, right? So, you know, how much money are we willing to put forward to get these grants? How much time are we willing to put forward to get these grants? How much staff time do you want to put forward to get it, who's in charge of it and what kind of, what their goals are? So that's the deliverables. And then again, we have accountability. And that's what you're asking about, is, is, you know, how do I know as a board member, how do I have accountability that my staff is following through on the, the goals that I've set for them? And again, that's important as part of the strategic plan, to set deadlines and kind of criteria that you're asking for. So you're not going to say, I want you to apply for this grant, this grant and this grant by this date. That, that's the goal of staff, staff makes, staff is the one that's got that knowledge, the training, the resources to go and say, okay, I, I consulted with my peers, there's these four grants available, I'm going to apply for it. But your goal is to say, have they, have they done, you know, have they applied for the grant, you know, have they sought money out to fulfill this project within this period of time? And to ask them to report back on that. I have a, you know, a couple of jurisdictions that actually do a very formalized strategic plan that has timelines in it, right? It says, by this date, we're going to have this information, by this day, we're going to have this information. And that information should then be brought back to you. So you do, you do have the right to see it. What you don't have the right to do again is, is come in and say, I think you should do this over here or I think you should do it a little bit different over here, because again, you can't. You are, we're going to talk about this a lot, but you're one of five. So every time you sit down and meet with Adam, Adam says, thank you very much, but he can't do anything with that information until three other ones sit down and talk with him about the same thing, which has to be then kind of formalized. So if you guys were in charge of the day-to-day operations, nothing would happen, because we would have to agendize and meet probably hourly in order for him to have enough direction to move forward. So what he needs to do is create a plan that's specific enough that you're confident that your general manager can carry out. And then you have to then ask for reports on it.
I have a question, I'd like to hit you back with that thirty thousand foot rule. So say we have five topics, right? When, do, do we, would we need like every six months or every year to make sure that those five topics are, what, what's the norm for that, to make sure that those are the five topics? That would be the overarching strategic point, right?
Right, so there's no norm for that, you set how often you want the reports. So it sounds like, you know, some of you want it more frequently.
I would want it to be every, every meeting.
Every morning. There's nothing wrong with that, and again, there's nothing wrong with saying, you know, asking for updates on projects. Again, this is information being presented to you, this is not, again, reopening and. This is not, again, reopening and digging in and saying, let's move this over here and let's prioritize over there. That should be done probably quarterly. Where you sit down and say, are these still our priorities? And you know, and, and when you're, again, when you're a functioning jurisdiction that is really in, you know, in maintenance mode, maybe every six months. And you're in a real, you know, real competent jurisdiction where you got no problems, maybe every year. But if, if, when you're in building, when you're in the building phase, every quarter, sit down and say, I've decided, I, you know, I don't think this is a priority that should still be on this list. Let's talk about it. And then, as a group, you decide whether it goes off. But you can't do that unless you have the information that you need in order to make those decisions. So asking for a report or a status update on projects, sorry, let me rephrase that. Asking for a status report on the strategic plan and achieving goals in that project is appropriate at every meeting. But again, it's a presentation, it's not a redating, reopening, and looking around. So I think that, that would be entirely appropriate. 'Cause again, you're the bosses, right? You're in charge. As a whole, you're in charge. None of you individually are in charge, but as a whole, you're in charge. And everybody who's ever run a business, or everybody's ever worked in government, you can't make decisions without the information. So never be afraid to ask for the information you need. That's always allowed. So, that's important.
So for example, it's say, we are gonna get the strategic plan report off from the manager. If he's not calling for a vote, that means we're not vote, we're, we're not talking about a project, we're just talking about what, where we are in the strategic plan.
So, what, what typically this looks like, and again, I have some that do it during board meetings, I have some that actually have a graph on their, their website, where the general manager just does periodic updates, and so any board member or member of the public can come in and look and say, okay, we applied for these four grants, okay? We have a contract now to build this, you know, this building, okay? It's moving along, we're hitting our goals, and you know, you know, checkboxes when goals are achieved. I have some that do it as, at the end of every board meeting, just, you know, a general manager report, or they call it a strategic plan report. Uh, I think that's how Susan Hill does it, every, every, um, every meeting, they, the general, the city manager just says, you know, here's our five goals, here's what, here where we are on each of them, here's the progress that's been made on each of them. And sometimes, no progress is gonna be made on them. And you have to be okay with that. 'Cause again, we're dealing with five very big projects here. You guys, you guys have not set small goals for yourselves. A lot of times I see goals like employee retention, you know, some stuff that you can kind of really achieve quickly. You guys are setting building big projects here. So these are gonna take time. And so, sometimes the answer is gonna be, nothing has been done in this. And you can ask, uh, you know, you can ask, why has nothing been done? But, but at the same time, that doesn't mean that's a failure. That just means we are, you know, here's the priorities, here's what we're working on, and where, here's where we are. So again, I think, I think when you guys meet this afternoon, I, I, I think you have great projects, but maybe dig in a little more and set the resource allocation, set the timelines, and set your expectations for reporting. And how often you're gonna revisit them. So it's all been laid out, uh, and so you can, your, your staff is not wondering, oh oh, am I gonna put all this work in at the next meeting, are they gonna change it? And I'm gonna have just lost, you know, a month of staff time doing something. You wanna make sure that they know where you are, uh, and what they, what, what you wanna see from them. So that's really important. And again, if I can stress, this is your number one job within your jurisdiction. This is your number one job, is to create the vision for your community. And to put the right people in place to carry out that vision. But I wanna remind you again, 'cause this is, it's so hard in small communities where everybody, where there's so limited staff, limited resources, it's hard not to wanna roll your sleeve up and also be the staff and get it done. And I want you to remember that you are the bosses, and you are not the workers. And you have to keep that mentality, is that, that we need to set the priorities, we need to set the direction, and then we need to support the staff as they carry them out. So that is your number one goal. So I just kinda wanna remind you of that as you go into this, because I know we, again, I've worked for so many small jurisdictions where you guys are board members, and sometimes you also get lights, and sometimes you, you know, come in and clean the, the buildings on weekends. You end up doing everything, 'cause nobody's willing to step up. And, you know, usually the people in these positions are the, the good doers in the community. Um, and that's, it's very hard to maintain that mentality, but I want you guys to remember you're the bosses. Set the priorities.
You know, I'd just like to interject here and support Adam, but, um, he has, um, done this, in my opinion, very well. And it's my opinion, right? I think that, um, when we look at the strategic plan, our number one priority is the fire hall. And we've got monthly updates on where we were with the fire hall. And this meeting, we actually had a vote on the project itself, right? We've waited two years for this, and we've been updated regularly. So I would like to thank you for, you know, following this process. I think that everybody wants the details, you know, the drawings, details of a project right now. But it took two years to get to this point. It took, you know, him securing the funding, him waiting on the engineering, and, and we were literally updated on every meeting. So I, I'd like to, you know, make sure that I tell Adam that I think he definitely got it.
Thank you.
Well, and that, and again, and that's exactly how it's supposed to work. You've just kinda summarized exactly how it's supposed to work. So, um, but we have four other projects on the list, and so now, let's figure out how to make all those work just as smoothly as this one did. Uh, 'cause that, again, that is your goal, is to do that. So, yeah, highlighting, if your role, if you, if you take anything away from this, is to remember, your role is to set these priorities. Is to set these priorities and then ask for, you know, accountability on the door.
Is it appropriate to take all the comment?
I think so.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, so I would just like to point out, a part of the public plan, right, the, the existing purpose and duties and responsibilities of the CSD is the freshwater sewer, lighting, parks, and fire department. And, uh...
So are you, so, so we just don't know what the strategic plan is?
Thanks, I'm still speaking about the stra- strategic plan and the lack of the mention of existing duties on the strategic plan. Carrying those out to the best of the abilities, to make sure that things are running as smoothly and polished, as polished as possible. Seems to the community and a lot of people that the five things that are on the strategic plan are a distraction from the basic duties and performances of the CSD. Case in point being, while we talk about building a community center or other things, there being, um, there being a lack of a plan to have a generator at the facility that will be the ambulance quarters, the sheriff's substation, and a fire department. That seems like a pretty critical thing to ensure that that building would have power no matter what.
That's not true, that's simply not true. You don't know what you're talking about.
Oh, I'll talk, take that up. I'll, I guess the fire chief is not telling me the truth either. Copy that.
Yeah, and I just wanna, we're doing a train, a local training here, so we can dig into the specifics later, if, you know, in terms of what the projects are. Um, and, but, but just again, your role is to set the policies, is to set, we mean to set the overall strategy. Um, delivery of day-to-day services, that's your general manager's responsibility. Um, and, and so it's important to, again, remember the difference between policy and goal setting, and policy and goal delivery. So, um, you know, typically, uh, typically, when we're looking at the strategic plan, we're not looking at day-to-day functioning, we're looking at vision of what we want the community to look like, so it's bigger ideas. Now, coming to the next point after, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to, to clarify what you just said. 'Cause you said, there's a policy of goal setting and then the policy of goal delivery. And the goal setting is the board's plan, the goal delivery is staff's. Right?
Yes.
Does that make sense? That's, I just needed to hear that again, and see it.
Say that one more time.
Okay, so the policy to the board is goal setting. The policy of goal delivery, the deliverables, is the staff. Is that correct? Okay.
Question?
Yeah.
In developing a strategic plan, now, somebody comes in with an idea and says, well, need to do this. Should that be adopted by the board itself before they delve into following through on it, or rejecting it?
So, you mean, it, it's hard, because you're developing five goals for your jurisdiction. It doesn't mean that little projects aren't gonna pop up in here and in there to make service delivery happen. So it's, I can't really answer that question without having a more specific example. But if it's something where like, we wanna do a big project in the community, um, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna rebuild, uh, this building, let's say. That should become to you before anyone starts moving forward on it, because it's gonna require...
The, the board wants to take that particular project.
You wanna put this on your priority list, knowing that it's gonna take this much money and this much time. Um, if a water main rakes, uh, and you're gonna need, you know, daily functioning, yes, yes, that, that would come back to you, that would be, let's fix this and move on. So again, but if it's, if it's, if it's gonna take significant resources and significant time, then it should be determined on your stra- strategic plan where it is as a priority by this board before it starts.
As a goal.
Correct. As a goal. And then, yes. Because again, I, why, I can't stress enough is that there are limited resources within staff level. If you make everything your top priority, and make every deliverable tomorrow, your staff will run screaming, because they can't do that. So it's achievable goals, uh, and achievable time periods. Um, you're setting those, and then you're turning to your staff and saying, you got your back, we're gonna support those people.
And, and if I could, I, I had this conversation with Katie Benz about parks, right? And he wanted to come up with a plan for the...
Talk the lyrics, she can't hear.
Oh, sorry. Um, he wanted to come up with a plan for the, um, Greenville Park, you know? Katie Benz, he's on the I D R P D Park Board. And we were having this conversation, and because the boards are separate right now, right? Um, he said, well, he says, I'll go out and get the bids, and then I'll present them to Adam. And I told him, I said, well, you know, if the boards were merged, I mean, that's Adam's job, let him go out and get the bids and present them to us. And I had that, that, that's kind of that, we set the goal, and then the staff does the goal deliverable. We want that plan so that we can improve the park by this summer. Um, is that doable? Is it achievable? Is that reasonable? Is that something that, you know, Katie's gonna do, you know, it's a business, you can, that's all. You know, right? Working? Or is that something that you would, you know, request staff to do? So that was kind of an example of what a board does and what staff does. Does that make sense?
It does. And it, it also, it's very helpful for us as staff when we have the strategic plan, because we will get a lot of people requesting, hey, this is really important to me, community members, or even board members will come and say, this is really important to me. And we have the ability, once you've developed your strategic plan, to say, you know, it's not on this current board's strategic plan, so I, you know, it's not, it's not a current priority for this board. But that doesn't mean it can't be a priority in the future. We just need to have that discussion with the board to determine where they want this on this list. Because if you move something up to number one, whatever's currently number one is gonna get less attention. So you get to decide where it is on the list, how much resource, how much are priorities you're gonna get. But it gives us the ability to say, not on our priority list, if you want this to be on our priority list, you need to take it up with your other, your other four board members, or the five board members that's a member of the public. So it really is a really good tool for us as staff to be able to push back on the thousands of requests we will get daily to get stuff done. So, again, I'd like to spend a little bit of extra time on this, because, and I'm glad you guys were working on this afternoon, and I'm actually, I will say remarkably impressed about how far along you are in getting your goal settings. 'Cause that is, I work with a lot of special districts, and they're, they kind of, their eyes glaze over when I start talking about strategic planning, because it's, well, we're just keeping the lights on. And you guys are thinking bigger, and that's, that's great. Um, but I would, I would encourage you to keep thinking bigger and make sure that, again, you remember, your job is to set those priorities, set those expectations, set those timelines, and then provide the support to get it done. The next thing that, uh, with the next slide, the next thing you, on your list of your responsibilities is to set the policies. We always say, the board is the policy setters. So again, you're the policy setters, not the policy executors. Uh, and so it's very important to maintain and develop policies within your jurisdiction. Now, every jurisdiction I work with is deficient on their policies. It is not uncommon, because we're keeping the lights on, we're trying to get things moving. And, but the problem with is, if you don't have solid set policies, then you don't know who, whose responsibility is what. And it ends up making the board have to micromanage things more than you, than you should have to do. I mean, you are a voluntary position of oversight. You're not in day-to-day operations. And if you don't have policies, you feel, and you put yourself in a position of being day-to-day operations. And for example, is, you know, every jurisdiction should have a purchasing policy. And a purchasing policy is kind of the expectations of what goes out to bid, what, uh, what you can do without having a bid, uh, you know, what your, what your exceptions are, and what authority you're gonna give your general manager to execute contracts on their own, right? I see I getting, I getting lied, but it's absolutely correct. Most jurisdictions give their managers, uh, authority up to, most by jurisdictions up to fifty thousand dollars, so they can move forward on this, right? And maybe you're a little bit less than that, or maybe you're, you know, maybe you're not ready for that. But the concept is, if you don't entrust your general manager with the ability to move the jurisdiction forward, uh, on their own, you're gonna be doing two thousand dollar contracts, and you're gonna be dealing with, you know, keeping the lights on, and you're gonna be dealing with the little things that are not within your jurisdiction. And I understand, and we'll talk about it in a second, I understand the scariness of that, because the, you know, you come on this board with very little training, with huge budgets and huge responsibilities, and if something goes wrong, the finger gets pointed at you, right? That's the big fear in life. So the goal is to set the policies, to set the checks and balances in place, that you can have the assurance that it will get caught. If there's a problem, it will get caught. And then by having that, again, you can turn over day-to-day operations to your staff to do that.
So, so how do you build trust like that? Because this district, as you probably well know, was embezzled. And I know when I thought about coming on this board, I thought, man, I'm not sure I wanna get involved in that, right? I mean, the, the fallout from that was, was terrible for this valley. And I think that fear's still there. Like, how do we know that the district is...
It happens all the time. It, read our local news right now. I mean, it's not like an isolated thing, it's constant around here.
We, we know it's happening.
Maybe not in this county, but in our county.
Yeah, it just happened in the county, and, and that's super...
So transparency on all this stuff, pretty, you gotta be informed.
How do, or, or setting the checks and balances? I know there's an audit, but, you know, I mean, we sign every check. We have two board members that sign every checks. And I think that's a, a, a good way of doing it, but it's not probably the most efficient way of running the district. And how many other districts have the board member sign every check? Every check?
I have one other jurisdiction that has one board member along with the general manager signing. Yeah.
Then, then how do these districts, and, and I went down to a statewide meeting, you know, for CSDs, and, and, um, I can guarantee you that it's eight percent of them, maybe nine percent of them are probably non-compliant. I mean, you know, they're, they're running amok. And how, you know, how can you, as a board, have that trust and confidence in checks and balances?
Margaret, can you maybe talk about, like, what, what is the ecosystem of checks and
Margaret, can you maybe talk about like, what, what is the ecosystem of checks and balances? Because the board is just a piece of it, right?
Correct.
And I think that, I think that part of it is that the board is just simply unaware of like, when we have our annual audit, this entire room is taken up with six, seven, eight CPAs who sit in here for one to two weeks at a time and tear through our file cabinets and ask us pointed questions and demand to see backup and ask for board meeting. Okay, this random contract I just pulled up, show me the board meeting minutes where the board approved this. So can you maybe talk about the other pieces of the checks and balances besides the board?
Well, and, and to be fair, the board is really not the most important component of the checks and balance. I'm going to take that pressure off your back. Your goal is, again, to set the policies and procedures and put the right people in place to be the checks and balance. But nobody is expecting you to have, I mean, I think some of you might, but no one's expecting you to have a degree in finance to be able to look at an annual audit or, or, you know, no one's expecting you to be a lawyer and be able to analyze contracts. So that's, that's not what you're here to do. Your, your goal is to put the right people in place. And so if I were to look at any jurisdiction I've seen recently where there's been a breakdown and we've had the embezzlement, so we've had the other issues going on, it's not necessarily that the board failed. It's that the people the board put in place either failed to tell them of the problem or the board ignored it when they were told of the problem. So that's where I'm seeing the breakdown. So your goal, and we'll talk a little bit about how you're supposed, who you're supposed to put in what place. Because that's, you know, again, dealing with an audit. Your goal is not to find embezzlement and fraud. That is not your goal. You're not here to do that. You're here is to hire somebody to do an evaluation, determine if there's ever any problem, and then to listen to them if they tell you there's a problem. So that is the most important thing to remember is your job, again, you're, you're not going to, and, and having this check signing, if that makes you feel comfortable, I don't have a problem with it. But when you're doing it, how do you as a board member know what you're looking at? The only way you can know that this is a valid check that was approved appropriately is if you, again, start micromanaging the district and getting into the day-to-day operations. And it's going to slow the district down, you're going to be, your efficiency is going to go way down and your ability to function is going to go way down. So, but again, I don't have a problem if it makes you feel comfortable, but it is, it's definitely not the, I won't say recommended, but it's not, it's not what we're seeing in jurisdictions. And we're not, I'm not seeing jurisdictions that do that have any less failure rates on checks and balances. So that's, again, that's a personal decision for your jurisdiction. What I see, where I see the failure is when an auditor, and I've seen this a number of times, an auditor comes to you and says, we have a problem, and the board says, no, we don't. That's where the problems arise because the auditor will catch this.
You can't imagine a board saying that.
Oh, everyone in my boardroom.
Yeah, everyone in my boardroom. Yeah, I mean, that, Adam, Adam bails out small CSDs all the time. And I've heard stories of Scott Valley, the one you're in now, which is, what is that? I don't know. Some of those where they literally have just said, well, Chester, perfect example. You know, our department is using water and sewer funds.
Yeah, Chester, Chester ignored warnings for years.
Yeah, that's illegal as hell.
Yeah, so that's where we're seeing the problems.
Yeah.
And, and I, I know you see, as far as it happened, I, I just had it the other day. Somebody asked me that sort of arguing with our outside auditor about whether state fire funds were being properly allocated. I was like, I can argue with anybody, we're lawyers, right? We can argue with anybody, but do you really want me to? Or should we sit down and figure out what the problem is? And we did, and we figured out the problem and there was a solution and it was solved. But again, it's, it's, that's where you're going to, you're going to write the problems. That's, the checks and balances, that's where it needs to come into play. So, but, but it doesn't, but again, it starts with you establishing your policies and then knowing what those policies are and then your staff can follow within them. So again, I would really look at doing a purchasing policy. It will give you a lot of, if the other thing I'd like to tell you is if you have appropriate policies in place, you've done your job, right? And when something bad happens, the government code section that says that you're indemnified, meaning you're not liable if there's a problem because you've put the right people in place and the right policies in place, that, that will, you're indemnified. You can't be held personally liable if something goes wrong. If you don't have the right policies, then you're in trouble. That's where you get into trouble. So I would look at having some policies regarding financing, having policies regarding operations. Set those policies, set them in place. And then, again, trust when somebody says there's a problem with them or somebody's not following their policy. That's where it's going to come into play. But again, I want to be very important that setting these policies is part of your responsibility. You should look at them, you should revise them. You should not write them. It is not your job to write policy. Your job is to approve them and to make sure that you understand and make sure they're right for your jurisdiction. If you want a policy, you ask us to write them. That's our job to write them. Your job is to look at them, see if they're what you want and approve them. You can ask us to modify them. What we give you, you don't have to approve. You're in charge, you're the boss. We can give you something and you say, no, I, I don't think Adam should have fifty thousand dollars of authority. I think he should have twenty-five thousand dollars of authority. Okay, that is what it is. We can tell you what other jurisdictions do, what we see as successful, what we see as failing, but at the end of the day, it's your decision. But once you set those, then we have the guidelines, the staff of what we can operate in, makes our jobs a hundred times easier when we know the parameters we operate in.
Each of us have a copy of the policy?
Of the policies?
We will do those.
I'm pretty sure, although Andy might not have, I'm pretty sure everyone was given a full binder, but since we're talking about it now, Mary, you don't have one? Okay, since we're talking about it now, we'll make copies of our existing policies for everybody.
Yes. And I, okay, I think that's a great, great, great outcome from this. Get a copy of the policies and take a look through them. And if any of them just don't seem right, let's talk, we'll, we'll get them fixed. Because again, at the end of the day, if you have a solid set of policies and your jurisdiction's malfunctioning under these policies, you don't have to get into the day-to-day operations.
And so like, for, for instance, if you guys will remember at the last board meeting, remember I asked you to approve modifications to our sick leave and our vacation leave policies? So those were policies that the, you know, previous boards adopted. I asked you to modify, and those are just one of many policies in our policy handbook. And, I mean, not a week goes by, sometimes not a day goes by for a while where something doesn't happen with a customer, an employee, whatever, where it's like, well, I don't know how to answer that question. Let's go look and see what the policy says because that's what, that's what we're supposed to do. Yeah?
I can say, I, I, your, your strategic plan and what you've created is great lofty goals, but one of the strategic plan items I typically see in jurisdictions is update their policies. Because it's, it's a project. It's a big project that takes staff time. But think about it, you know, can you do everything you're looking to do without having a solid base to jump off of? And so sometimes you've got to say, we're going to put this project, this development project on the back burner while we get our house in line. And so that's why I think, I think it's a great idea for everybody to get a copy of them and then, you know, start looking through them to see where, you know, where you think you can strengthen them and where you think you can add to them. So again, you set your parameters and let your staff fly.
So we have a meeting to review and highlight or, and then present to adapt or change or add to or?
I, I would say that our job is to review the policies. And, and then, then as far as proposing updates for the policy, that's, is that our job?
So I think there's probably two ways that it can be done. One is just like what just happened, is the staff will recognize that a policy is outdated, inefficient, insufficient, and will come to you with some suggested changes. Then there's also, I think, probably, you know, a once every several year exercise that, you know, a board can go through and mass all of the policies and, and we can take a look at things. Chester is just now finishing its update of all board policies. It's taken ten months, just to give you an idea, because there are so many. I mean, there's, there's, there's a couple hundred policies. So there's, there's, yeah, there's kind of two ways to do it. And if the board, you know, wanted to make it a project to do a wholesale review of policies, I'd probably recommend, you know, a board subcommittee to work with staff to kind of go through everything individually or an attorney if it's needed, and then come back to the board with, you know, a list of red line changes for, for the board to consider.
And that was exactly what I was going to say. Most of the jurisdictions I work with, they'll do an ad hoc committee for policies. Because if you do them right, you need to dig into them, right? You need to look at each line and make sure it's correct. You need to make sure it's still legal because laws in California change every day. And it's hard, you know, you've got to make, I, I look at policies and, yeah, those are, those are before the twenty-seven new changes in law happened. But you also, again, you want the, the board's perspective in there because you want, you want the, the global policy perspective in there. How are these going to achieve our goals? How are these going to work our jurisdiction forward? So it's, it's very staff-heavy, but it would be great to have the insight of the board members so you can look from that policy perspective, the strategy perspective. So again, but that is a big project, so you have to look at your priorities. Is this something you want your staff to spend time on? I highly, again, I'm an attorney though, I highly recommend it because again, I don't think you can jump off and do all these projects if you don't have the base of operation. Because you spend more time dealing with personnel issues and you spend more time dealing with, you know, twenty-dollar contracts when you don't have your, your basic policies in place. So, and that's your goal.
And I'll tell you, I think one of the, one of the things that eventually does need to be addressed at IVCSD specifically, so we have a normal, like what I would call a normal set of policies that in the past it was provided by CSDA, which is still coming. You can still purchase updates from CSDA, stuff like that. So we have this, this binder of a couple hundred policies. But the other thing that's, that I haven't really run across in other jurisdictions, at least other special districts, is we also have a very detailed district code with a lot of ordinances that pretend to be policies and that conflict with the policies. And at the end of the day, like the ordinance is the one that carries more weight. And so sometimes, you know, there's these weird conflicts and I think a district code update is probably, probably more needed first than a policy update.
Wow, that sounds like really technical.
It, it is, I mean, it's kind of.
No, I will tell you what my analysis of it, and it brings up an excellent point, and I love that we think alike, is, I see that a lot, is that somebody got a great idea that put your policies in code. And we all know that code requires a lot of work to change, including publication and.
First hearings, public notices, yeah.
So no one does it, no one updates it because it's, let's just ignore it, it's there. And then you start writing these policies on the side, forgetting that the ordinance trumps the policy. My recommendation is that policy, especially personal-based policy, should not be in code. So my recommendation is typically to remove it from your code simultaneous with making sure that everything from that that you need that's not in policy gets transferred into policy. But again, it's a project. But I, you know, I have worked with a lot of jurisdictions to take this nonsense out of their code because it's inevitably wrong and inevitably conflicts with what you're doing on a day-to-day basis.
And probably.
Who, who adopts the, the code?
The, the board, the same. But code, but codes are, so, you know, policies are, are board-adopted internal guidelines, right? For operations and stuff. Ordinances and, and our, in our code book, that is district law. So that's why Margaret's saying that it trumps the policies. But they're both adopted by the board because ordinances and, and the code book have to be law. There are a number of procedural steps, a couple different meetings you have to read them at, you have to have public hearings, public notices, and, you know, all sorts of different stuff. It's just a much more rigorous process because they're law.
And, and policy should not be in law. That's what kind of the, the short way to say, policy should be in policy. So it sounds like that might be a good project to get it, that the priority of this jurisdiction would be to remove it from code and update your policies to reflect the, the will of the board.
How many people can be on that ad hoc committee?
It has to be a minority of the board, so two. So you have two board members and as much staff as you want. And that's typically what we write down.
You could have three on the committee.
Board members?
Uh huh.
No, you can only have two. Yes, because in the moment you have three, the brown patch comes into play. And so it has to be, again, a public meeting with notice and all stuff. And when we're doing, when you're doing red line working groups, it's really important to be able to, you know, because you're going to be meeting for a long time, you're going to be meeting in, you know, odd hours. It's just, it's a good idea to get this job one done. Now, everything that's adopted, all the changes are going to be made. Come back to the full board and the public for a full discussion. This is just, this is just the staff, the staff intensive labor of, you know, redlining and laboring. Yep. So two board members and any staff. Okay, so the next thing is overseeing the finances. We talked about this a lot. So you set your priorities, you set your policies, and your, your biggest job is oversee the finances. But again, we talked about this, your job is not to manage the checkbook. Your job is not really to write the checks. Your job is to set fiscal policy, practices, and controls. That is your job. And then your job is to then let your district staff carry out those policy practices and controls and make sure that there's accountability. So typically, we remember that you have your annual budget that's approved every year and that you should also be getting periodic reports to the board of the status of your finances. So those are kind of what your expectations are. And I know this is the scariest part because this is where folks get in trouble and things go wrong. But again, I want to be clear, your job is not to write the checks, your job is to set the policy. And then to assure that the right people are in the right place. So I want to talk a little bit before we move on about audits, which is my next slide. You're, you know, I, I've been practicing law for quite some time. I do not know the California State Controller's requirements. I do not know auditing standards because that's what an auditor does, right? Their job is to come in and know all the California law and to make sure it applies. I have not spent my life learning it like they have. So your job is to find an auditor that meets the California State Controller's requirements. And that would be somebody who has a CPA license. So they're coming in and they're going to do your annual audit for you. It needs to be done every year. One hundred and eighty days, it has to be done, one, a hundred and eighty days after the end of your fiscal year. So it has to be done, yes, it has to be done before January. You guys are, I don't know, are you June?
Before June thirty half.
Yep, so you have to be done by January. So that's the required, because they come in and do it. Now granted, if there's problems, sometimes it takes them longer. But the goal that the California State says is that you should have your financial course no later than a hundred days after the end of your fiscal year. So you're looking, your job is to make sure you have an auditor in place. And your job is to make sure that that auditor, auditor is periodically changed. And that's something that people forget. You forget that having a fresh set of eyes is a good thing every once in a while and with an auditor. So we, we do recommend that at least every six years, you bring a new person in to take a look at it. I am constantly surprised that when you bring somebody new and they catch something that the other person didn't catch before. That's how you prevent long-term problems from occurring. Your job is to cooperate, your job, sorry, your job is to direct staff to cooperate with auditors fully. Auditors will come to you if the staff is not cooperating with them. You'll hear about it, I'll hear about it. They'll say, they're, they're not letting me access these records. I've never heard that is a problem here, so I don't think you have a problem. But if they come to you and say, staff's not cooperating, that's, that's your job. You hire them, you make sure they're certified, you make sure that, that your instructor staff will fully comply with it, and then you make sure you review them when we're done. Because I talked about that before. The problem I see in jurisdictions is that when the information is brought to their attention, the board ignores it. Or the board downplays it. That is the most important part.
I think you've been very strict about following auditors.
And, and the auditors that I've had interaction with have said that the district has improved greatly from what it was. It was a black hole before. And it's improved greatly in the last three years, I think.
You're absolutely right about that.
Yeah, that's what we've got going.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
That's a great.
It's easier to find stuff, it's, you know, things are more organized and.
So your auditor's telling you, go back to a comment, some of your, your auditors are telling you it's vastly improved. Your auditors are telling you that your, your controls are in place. Your auditors are telling you you're on great projection. Why are we lacking trust? The auditors are the ones that are supposed to tell you if you should lack trust, right?
Well, I'm kind of new. So when I come in and sign checks, sometimes I'm signing checks that I don't understand what they are. And I think those wheels have been put in motion a long time ago, or what these checks are. And so, so it's not, I don't think it's a lack of trust, it's just, I would like to know why I'm signing a check for this amount, which I'm not sure what it's doing. And a lot of those things where those big checks are going out should be revisited. And I'm not sure that they need to continue or.
So you just want more information?
I guess so, yeah.
Do they always match the check? Maybe, I don't know. We see, we're getting mad.
Yeah, you know, I'm coming out and seeing that some of, some of them are pretty large and, I'm not sure it's worth spending money. But at least I would like to understand a little more where it's going. How long has this been going on? How long is this supposed to go on? What is the, the end result from this? You know, because that's a pretty big bleed that could make a big difference.
Well, that question was a twenty-eight thousand dollars to the water board, the state water board. And our water guy says, they've never come here, ever. So I don't know what we're paying it for, but the state doesn't swallow through.
So my thing is maybe not, not a lack of trust, maybe I just wasn't here because these things were put into motion.
Right, like the insurance, you know, the insurance checks. I think you can find signs on the insurance checks. I'm sure it's one of our, and that was since the fire. I mean, and, and our insurance was canceled and finding insurance, I was a part of that because I've been here longer. And, you know, I know exactly why our insurance premiums are high. Mine are at home, they're impossibly high. And that's the culture of California.
Yeah, well, and it sounds to me like, so you're using your check signing as a, as a, you're using it as a checks and balance.
Yes.
Well, it's the only way I'm going to know anything about.
Right. So what happens if, if you don't sign a check?
Somebody else signs it.
Somebody else signs it. So really it's more of a pass the buck? I mean, I'm trying to figure out.
I'm gracious on it. So I've got a check to sign, it's twenty thousand dollars to an engineering company and the billing from the engineer says.
Progress payment.
Progress payment. What the hell's your work on?
Yeah, let's see some, show us something.
How many hours did you spend? What did you do to substantiate a twenty thousand dollar check? You know, it's, attorneys keep their time minute by minute. What engineering companies do too.
What?
So it, it should be nothing for them to put that information on their invoices.
Susan, do you look at the second page? So like Dean's, Dean's invoices, just specifically Dean. Like his first page is the progress payment just overall, right? And then if you look at the second page, it's always on January sixth, you know, thirteen minutes on whatever, January. That's all, all of, yeah, all of Dean's, Dean's invoices are very similar to, to Francis Wong's. He sends a different invoice for every single project, so they're all broken out by invoice. So who's working on five projects, we're getting five invoices. So there, I mean, there's.
It doesn't matter whether it's Dean or not, but I'm very gracious on that kind of thing. Having worked in engineering, you had the accounting time for the chargeback, so. And that's the kind of thing I expect on invoices if I'm going to sign a check.
But I think that's Adam's job, right? I mean, I think that's Adam's job.
Well, then that's where trust is started. I mean, how do we, we didn't, we just, I like Adam, don't get me wrong. I really like Adam, but, but what does that mean?
Well, it means that, it means that Adam reviews how much work that we're hitting from the engineer. And I, and I've been a part of this as well. And I, and I've been a part of this as well. We tried to, to find another engineer. And, um, and couldn't do it. I, I'm just as, I, I'm like every member of the board, I'm not altogether happy with how much Dean charges us. He charges us a lot, and we see it every single month, right? It's not new.
Yeah.
And to find another engineer, I've been on the phone myself to engineering companies with Adam when we were trying to find alternative engineering. And they all recommended, I wouldn't change engineers, all the companies that we talked to.
I'm gonna say something. If we have policy that detailed invoice needs to be attached to a check, then let's do it. Who cares? Let's see invoice for the cupcakes today. For twenty-eight thousand dollars to the engineer, it doesn't matter.
But the invoices are all attached to the checks.
Yeah, well, Susan and I were supposed to sign one, and we turned it back to...
I guess.
Jessica? It was Jessica. We said, we'll sign it when we see something to handle, because it was progress payment. On what?
Yeah, so that being said, he already has a blank check. You know, he can write whatever checks he wants. We don't. So that fifty thousand dollars or whatever, I mean, that's basically going on already.
Not, no, not really. So you, when you, so everything I'm hearing, we'll use my contracts as an example. When I, when I started working here, I put forward a contract to the board to sign. So the board has reviewed my rates, they've reviewed my qualifications, they've signed my contract.
Right.
So we.
We signed an agreement with them as well.
Right. And that authorizes, that authorizes me to start working in advance of payment. So once according to you guys have authorized me to start working, I start working and I give you a bill for my work. You have to pay, right? You've already approved it.
So I can.
So when, what I'm concerned about is what happens if you guys are saying, we don't want to sign this, we don't feel comfortable. And I, I'm fine with you guys saying, we don't feel comfortable signing it. I'm fine with you saying that, but what happens? I don't get paid based on a contract you've already approved. So what happens then?
Well, we need, we need some clarity about what we're signing. I need some clarity.
Basically, what it is, sending it back to the bookkeeper and saying, we need more data on this to know where the money's going rather than writing the check. Because Margaret worked, she says she worked twenty hours. What'd you work on?
Well, again, and, and we talked, we, it sounds like your engineering, I both do by the five-minute increments of everything I've done that you can review. So you as a board want to review that for every contract. You wanna see ev- okay. See, again, I'm going back to what I talked about before, is that really your role? Is your role to be the one that manages the district? Or is yours the role to set the policies in place that then the staff has to come in and manage it? Is it Adam's job to review those bills? I mean, I, I'm, I counsel into Hamon County. I get all the outside council bills come to my office. I review every single one, and I send about half of them back, being like, you double billed for this, you know, because you know, engineers do the same thing. They, two people work on the same project, not acceptable, I send them back. When those bills go to the board, the board doesn't have all that backup information, they just know that I, in my role, have reviewed it. And then when the outside auditor comes in, they say, what did you review? And I show them. And they say, you reviewed it correctly, or they say, Margaret, you need to review it better. And then they'll tell you, Margaret's not doing her job. And then you can come and say, Margaret, you did your job or you're tired. That's how it's supposed to work. What I'm seeing is that you guys have been in survival mode. And you probably have some, some trust issues based on poor performance of prior managers, that you're trying to micromanage the whole process. And I'm just wondering if that's what you, if you mean want to do, or do we want to try to put the policies in place and get the procedure moving forward? Where you can know that when you're signing a check, it's already, the contract's already been seen by you. If it's, you know, up, up to a certain amount, you've already approved it, and that your staff has done a line-by-line analysis and determined that it's an appropriate bill.
You've got a good point, right? What? Cause we're still coming out of survival.
I get it. And that's what we're talking, I mean, this is, this is why it's fun to come and do these trainings, because I'm trying to teach you guys how to go in thrive mode. That you know, let, let's get, let's move past survival mode and figure out how to be the big picture jurisdiction. But I'm not in any way judging you, because I would have done the exact same thing you guys did. I, I, you know, you're, especially with finances, it's, I get it, I completely get it.
Yeah, it's not our money.
You're, you're, you're representing the citizens and you have an obligation, um, to oversee it. But again, I'm trying to remind you that your job is to oversee it, not to do it.
But, but somebody should give us a report on how these things are going.
So do we need to change policy to have itemized?
Well, I think that would be basically asking. Do we, do we have to write or change policy to demand to get itemized bills?
I, since, since we have a new controller, I have never seen a check without an itemized bill. I, and I sign a lot of them. I, I'm not sure what bills you're seeing that doesn't have an itemized detail with it.
I can't remember ever asking the board to sign a single check in the last three years that doesn't have backup document.
No, right. Very good about having new sources and building to it. But it's just the detail in which it comes.
And I, and I, and in my opinion, and this was, you know, we have, Susan and I have a finance meeting on Tuesday. And we're, um, we, the, the outcome of that meeting was to have a, a document that's board-friendly. So that you would know where we were financially. In, in my opinion, I think that's where the, um, the dollars come in. How much are we paying for legal? How much are we paying for engineering per year or per month? You know, for the district so that we can keep an eye on that, right? Cause approving the budget is, is our job. And we see that in the budget, we wouldn't necessarily need to see it in the itemized, um, bill and signing the check. Because in my opinion, that's Adam's job, is to make sure that the engineer that he's, that, that we sign the contract with that engineer... Or we sign the contract with the attorney, I signed it, his board chair, I've seen her contract, I've seen Dean's contract. And what we've authorized him to do for the year, he has to, he has to provide that contract annually. And, um, that's Adam's job to make sure that we're not getting overcharged or undercharged by the engineer. That's not really, I, I don't want that to be my job. Um, I would like to, I think my job is to make sure that we're not paying the engineer more for, you know, have a budget.
A debt of nothing.
For, for more than we budgeted, right? So this engineer that drafted the firehouse, you know, I think that budget item was forty grand or whatever the hell it was.
Right, and we, we made changes, and so we exceeded that.
Exceeded that.
Right, so that's why we came back to the board and had you approve an amendment to the, to the engineering agreement.
And that information needs to come from him.
Well, and that's, that's again where the policy comes into play. I mean, it should be a policy that your contracts said of not to exceed an amount, right?
And that was a one-time deal. And when you're talking about a one-time deal, I'm talking about reoccurring monthly. Those are the ones that I wanna know about.
Our contracts with engineering and, um, and, uh, legal and insurance are annual contracts.
Maybe we can get a, um, monthly at the board, we need a check register. Or the thing, we've gotten that.
We've gotten that sometimes.
Yeah, sometimes.
And I think, Andy, I think your concerns are probably better suited to be addressed through the annual budget process. Rather than the monthly check signing process. Cause the budget process is where we look on, you know, what we're gonna be prepared to, to outlay for the whole year, right?
Companies that are doing research, the company in Portland, and there's one in Iowa.
Uh huh, Ohio, yeah.
Ohio. Those guys, it would be nice to know what's going on with those. I mean, are we still, are we still throwing money at them?
So in one.
And what are we getting?
So in that document that we agreed to have the district agree, the board, the board friendly document, right? There's two categories, there's the, um, capital, um, and then there's the expense. And that the capital would include the grant, um, funding that's capitalized, right? So grant funding, where did it go? And I think, you know, when we're hiring, um, researchers and whatnot for digital projects that maybe weren't funded. That's all, and the detail is all in that category. The operational part of it, you know, that, that guy from Ohio's profit, that's kind of the day-to-day operation thing, right? We hired them to look at, um, uh, a specific project. That would be part of that, that capital explanation, um, section of this document that we designed.
Yeah, and it seems to me that what I'm hearing is that we're using the check signing process as a, as a way to understand where we are in project delivery. And, and they're different. And so I, I, what I would encourage you to do is to, to streamline your check signing ability. And, and make it, make, you know, make it easy, but make sure maybe up your project delivery. I think we talked about that earlier. What I'm hearing is that you wanna know where certain projects are and why, if they're gonna go over budget, and why they're costing so much money. That's appropriate for you to ask. And so when we talked about strategic planning, talking about you having deliverables and having reports on where things are. And what I'm hearing is that you probably need more update and more meat in your reports and your updates. So that it doesn't just include, we're working on this project, includes, you know, they've done this many hours on the project. We're, we're looking to get, stay within budget, we're looking to not stay within budget, I'll be coming back to you as a request in the future. And more information in that component of it. But, but, but again, I, I would encourage you to look at them as separate goals. Because I, if you're saying, you're saying, I don't, I, I, I'm using this opportunity as a way to look at where we are on project delivery. And, and I'm not gonna sign the check and delay information about where we're on project delivery. Um, you could get yourself in some legal problems, because you're not paying your consultancy right contracted to pay. But I also want you to have that information, because we talked about the beginning, it's very important for you to have all the information you need to make your decisions. So I would encourage, instead of not signing it, to say, hey, Adam, can you put something on the agenda with an update on this project?
And, and I think that in our client's, I mean, one of the things that, um, and this is something that Adam and I talked about even a week before. Was that we need to have something that's really clearly understandable. In other words, I think we received a grant for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that was to go towards, um, the research of a project, right? And we've spent fifty thousand. We still have money from that original grant that was paying for that.
Yeah, see, if any, you know that.
Right, and, and, and I saw that on the capital, um, finance sheet that, um, uh, Patty gave us on Tuesday. And we asked for that information to be, um, being plain and clear on, in a specific format. So we just asked for that. Um, and I think that's the project reporting and the operational reporting. And it comes in two categories, it's capital and expense, right? Capital is, would be the grants and the projects, and expense would be the operational costs monthly that happen within the district. And, and you don't wanna mix those dollars, um, you wanna keep them real clear and separate. And I think that.
Yeah, that, that, that already is a little.
Good, glad you're, she comes right in my brain.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, the, the financial statements are, they're, they're long, they're big, they're complicated, and they have a lot of information that you really don't need. There's a lot of information on there that the auditor needs. So yeah, I think it'll help when we have clearer, simplified, more simplified, um, financials. We will also make sure we can start including a check register all, uh, uh, each month. Um, but then, but then I, I al- I also already wrote down, you know, and I, I've been meaning to for a while, but now I will kick it into gear. Really put together a, a, a public, a, a project matrix, um, that's updated monthly. And I kinda like the idea of putting it on our, on our website.
Checks registered shows reoccurring large amounts that we can make sure we're like.
I wanna see money.
Is this coming from a, a grant that we got, you know, and that's.
We had a project matrix and we had a dream of a project.
We did.
Yeah, it was beautiful, you set it up, and we should have one of those every meeting.
Yep.
It wasn't, it wasn't that beautiful.
It was, it was.
Once again.
I'm, I'm new.
No, we need that, we need a project, and then one that has a budget that goes with it.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's, again, that's the information I want you to have. And that's what you should be looking at. And again, when you get your check registry, if you see something that seems out of line, instead of, you know, again, stopping movement of jurisdiction. You, all you do is you save more information, please.
Yeah, exactly. It makes it very, very simple.
Yeah, and it's already online, with a registry, you probably don't even need to ask Adam, you can just look up the matrix and see where you are. If it's not there, you just ask him to update it.
I have a stupid analogy. I'll go back to the cupcakes again. If we see, we see for the cupcakes, for a hundred dollars for a dozen cupcakes, we're gonna go, whoa, change bakery's.
Yeah, which is why when you get the check registry, that's your topic, that's your check and balance. I like that idea much better, because from a legal perspective, I get concerned when payments are held up at any point. Because that's a problem from a, from a project delivery standpoint. Um, but I also wanna make sure you have your information you need. So I think what we've talked about, it sounds like it's going to help the problem. But again, I encourage you, as one of the policies you look at, you do look at your purchasing policy, and you make sure it's more streamlined. Cause what I see, what we talked about, is that you guys are still in survival mode, and you are looking at the cupcake receipt for a hundred dollars. That is way below what you should be looking at.
I'm just trying to make sense.
I'm using it as an example as well, because it's way below what you should be looking at.
It's simple.
You need to be looking at, do we have the right people in place? Are they achieving the goals that we have set out? Are they delivering it on time and on budget? That's what you're looking at. So, so again, survival mode, we're gonna go to, we're gonna, we're gonna take a step beyond that. And I think one of the things you guys need is purchasing policy, um, to make it clear exactly who's doing what and how it's being done.
Just for, just for reference, I just, I pulled up our, our current policy. And so right now, we have basically, the general manager has authority for five thousand dollars.
Thanks.
Um, yes, to, to award a contract for five thousand dollars. But then checks, we do have a policy, and this was created in twenty eighteen, so a couple of years after the kerfuffle. And it does, basically, it does say, say that every single check needs to be signed by two board members. So that's what we, that's what we currently have.
We can revisit that, but, cause again, that's, that's really low, because you're gonna end up having to look at cupcake receipts, you know? You're gonna have, we'll get something that's below you, below your, your, your status. Okay, so next one, just kinda going to auditing. Again, auditing is the, the key to protecting the jurisdiction, not, um, not us, it's auditors. Um, so we wanna make sure of that. The other thing again, is you're, you're, you know, I wanna highlight this as, and, and again, a lot of this information comes from the CDSE. Um, I like to take credit for making it all up on my own, but, uh, they have a lot of resources there. And I, I kinda looked through what they say are the roles of a board member, and then, you know, personalized my own. And they had one in there about guiding employee relations. And I put that in there to kinda wanting to remind you that your job is not to supervise employees. You have the job to supervise two employees within the district. Uh, the only two people you're in charge of are your general manager and your legal counselor. Those are the only two that should be reporting to you, as you are the boss. Everyone else should be reporting at the chain of command to your general manager. Uh, the only reason I'm separate is because I legally says I can't report to the general manager, I have to report to the board. Uh, but everyone else reports up through Adam. So one of the common questions I do get a lot is, you know, can I see this employee's personnel file? What's going on with this employee? Uh, you know, all these questions that, that come to legal counsel and to general manager about employees. And that unfortunately is not on your need-to-know basis, you're not on the need-to-know. You supervise Adam, if Adam is not properly supervising his staff, you discipline Adam. You don't get to discipline the staff. So I just wanna make you remember is that same thing is with policy, you're not on the day-to-day operations. You're setting the policies, you're putting in place your employee performance policies, you're putting in place the standard and the metrics by which you evaluate people. And then you're letting Adam carry that out. Uh, but you are setting salaries. No salary should ever be set in the jurisdiction without you knowing it, that is where, and without, as we know from what just happened in Lewis County. Without you knowing all of the information and having it publicly disclosed on a brown act notice meeting. Um, you should never be, um, you, you guys have, you don't have MOUs here, you don't have MOUs.
We don't.
Okay, if you had a MOU, you would negotiate with job descriptions, those are within your jurisdiction. Um, and organizational structure, that is within your jurisdiction. So you, your job is to set your organizational structure, your job is to set policies in place, and to approve the job descriptions. Also to set the budget to pay for it. Um, day-to-day operations and day-to-day supervision goes under your general manager.
Like a good, a real-world example, so if you don't remember from last year, you'll see it again probably later this month at your regular board meeting. So IVRPD is asking us to create some new positions that they want to fund, um, under our agreement with them. And so I'll be bringing to you a couple new job descriptions, because we don't have these classifications. No one's ever approved these job descriptions, so I'll ask you to approve some new job descriptions. And then ask you to approve where to place these positions on our salary schedule, on our master salary schedule. And, um, and that's, that's required. Uh, but then, you know, we do that, we get paid by IVRPD, et cetera. But that's, that's why I bring those things to you guys. And why, uh, last year when we adopted our budget, you know, I needed board approval to give a cost of living adjustment to our, uh, on, on the, on the salary schedule, right?
I just got a raise after I got fired.
What was that?
I actually got a raise after I just got fired.
Oh, Doge is working.
I worked for the government.
Oh. That is, I didn't know what to do with that information. Okay, well.
Now they're saying, please stay.
Oh, now you're getting rehired?
Yeah.
Demand, demand more, demand double salary back. Um, okay, so again, policy, that's just wanna make sure you know your relationship to employees. And then the last one is your responsibility of serving as opinion leader. I think this is one of the most important components of it. You are the face of the jurisdiction, and you should be the face of the jurisdiction. Um, you know, and. You know, and so I always remind boards, and this board, I have to tell you, you guys are an absolute pleasure to present in front of. I feel like there's really good open communication and respect and appropriate behavior. I now work in a lot of jurisdictions where there's screaming, fistfights, and all that great stuff. So congratulations on, on being a functioning board. I'm really, it's, it's actually a, not a common thing anymore, so you guys should be very impressed yourself. But the thing is, is by having that unity and having that discussions, discussions are appropriate. You should be, you should be debating, you should be asking questions. That's an absolutely appropriate thing to do. The fighting is where it gets bad. So remember that when, when people are looking at your jurisdiction to decide whether it's a good place to live, good place to build, good place to come in, first thing they're going to do is look at, you know, how your board functions. Because that's a real microcosm of how the community functions. So I would highly recommend to remember that you are the face of the jurisdiction, and if you act with unity, it really does help you achieve your goals. If someone's going to come in with, you know, a couple million dollars to build a project in here, they're going to want to know that they're dealing with a board that is going to listen to them, and is going to follow procedures and do, do things correctly. So when, when discord comes in, or when you start publicly bashing staff, which I know you don't, but I've seen other jurisdictions do, or when, when you start having that type of behavior, not only does it hurt the organization internally, but it hurts the organization externally. Because they really do look to you to be the leaders in the community.
The city of Redding, they're legendary, aren't they?
Yeah, Shasta County is legendary, actually. Yeah, yeah, I know way too much about that jurisdiction, but that's where I live. And unfortunately, my husband's on board up there, so, oh lord. He's only been on it for a month, so it's not his fault, he's trying to fix it. But it is definitely, it, it, but it is. I mean, Nicky, he, first when he walked into, people were screaming at him and yelling at him. It just, and, and guess what it does? It makes them a joke. I mean, I joke about it, I make fun of them daily to him, because it is, it's bad. And that's why, you know, it's nice to walk in here. And again, I, agreeing is not what I'm asking for. You guys do not need to agree on everything. I want, you're put in this position for your independent position and independent decision. It's the respect and the listening and the board, you know, and trying to come to consensus. That's what we're looking for. All right, so the key, your other, the last responsibility I'm going to give you and put on your plate today is that you do have a responsibility to keep an eye on legal matters. But again, I don't want you to think you're in it alone, that's where, I feel my job is to come into place. But there are several requirements that I just want to make sure you're aware of, that we follow. And I know you do, website maintenance. Luckily, in my preparation for this, I had a chance to do it through your website. You do have a great website. But after 2022, there are a lot of things that you're now required to put on your website, on the verity code, like agendas, information, state mandated transactions, compensation reports. All that stuff's got to be on it. Because again, we're looking at making sure everything is public, and the public has access to it. So if you look at your website and you think, you know, is this the face of our agency? And the answer is no, then maybe that's something you want to put on your priorities list, is updating it. I loved it yours, you guys have a pretty good one. So good job on that. But again, keep your eye on that going forward. That's one of your requirements.
And if I, just about the website, so, you know, you guys, every month you see this check for a couple hundred bucks to streamline, right? And if you've ever wondered why we pay that for our website, it's because Streamline is a very popular template website for small jurisdictions. And it kind of makes it simple to keep, to keep in compliance, right? They, they let us know, like, okay, you need to upload your, your, your compensation report, or, or point to the state comptroller's office, you need to do this, you need to do that.
Well, they have to stand for work.
Exactly, they have all that. And then, you know, there's also, you know, legislature's always looking for new rules to make. And so, you know, there's a lot of talk now of, of making, well, websites already have to be ADA accessible. But now there's talk of making documents that you post on websites also must be ADA accessible. And so, you know, what, Streamline will play, play a role in that. But that's, that's the reason, you know, it is, it is pretty serious. Because just like our office needs to be ADA accessible, websites also need to be, so.
How do websites? This is applicable to all county, all service districts, not just community service districts.
That is correct, yeah.
Yeah. Trying to laugh code, yelling was up to date.
No, I can tell you, I, I, part of what I do when I come into these trainings is I kind of do a little, and, and you guys were good. And I was happy. But there's times that, you know, you can't find agendas, you can't, I mean, there's, there's folks that I'm not even sure have websites. And, and while it seems minor, you know, when, when the state comes out of its form of survival mode, guess what? They're going to try to get some money out of these jurisdictions by, by doing these audits on these types of things. And so again, it's a really good thing to double check. Just keep your eye on, I'm glad you have a program that helps you do it, so. I would say that is money very well spent. Because the, the fines we're going to start to see for the lack of these types of websites is probably going to be much more than you're paying for, for, you know. So you jump to two, to, the other responsibility again is, is make sure you comply with the Brown Act. Again, I, your, your, the Brown Act is a, a, supposed to be a very simple procedure, but having trained on it up in the state of California for the past twenty years, I can tell you that everybody gets it wrong. Everybody thinks they're a Brown Act expert, and they're not. So I want to make it very clear, there's no expectation that you are a Brown Act expert. That is, Adam and my job is to make sure that you, you have the information. But I do highly recommend that you do take a Brown Act training. Because if I were to look at a majority of the problems that come in, it's because there's lack of Brown Act compliance that is going on. Has anyone had the Brown Act training?
It's in pieces.
It's in pieces. It's a good idea to have one, because, I mean, globally, the concept is any business of the jurisdiction needs to be done in the public, okay? So that, I'll talk you through Brown Act. What, what happens is there is about two hundred and seventy-six exceptions to that rule. And that's where, you know, that's where it comes into play. So, you know, it's really good to know it. Because again, you are responsible to making sure your jurisdiction complies with the Brown Act. We will, we'll give you our best, our best advice on it, but you also responsible. And one of the things is that we can't always be in the room when things are going on. And one of the basic conflict concepts, again, of, of the Brown Act is that all jurisdictional business has to be done in an open notice meeting. So we're not with you when you guys meet up for a barbecue on Friday night. And that's what we call, we barbecue on Friday?
No.
I was like, okay, thanks for the invite. But, so, so that's where it comes into play, is that, you know, there's a concept called serial meetings, which is you can create a Brown Act violation out on the street if more than two of you talk about an issue. So if there's an issue with your jurisdiction and you talk to more than one other individual on the board, you have violated the Brown Act and created a serial meeting. Because that conversation should be having in a notice open meeting. And that can happen, you know, with you guys getting three, you getting together for lunch and talking about it. But it can also happen with board member number one calls board member number two and says, I really don't like the fluorescent lights that Adam bought, I think we should pass a policy of no fluorescent lights. Board number two called board members three and says, I don't like the fluorescent lights, I think we should pass a policy. And I talked to board number one and she agrees with me. Okay, so now you have a consensus of the board done in private, and that's not allowed. So again, we'll make sure agendas, things are gendized correctly, we'll make sure that everything is done right from that perspective. I just want you to remember that you can create a Brown Act violation outside of this room by having those communications. The other one is emails. I can't tell you, I have got, you know, very advanced boards that I work with that are actually, you know, that's all they do for a living is be a board member. And they can't get, they can't understand, reply all.
Reply all.
So, so if you send an email out to more than two board members, ask anything about the jurisdiction, you've created a Brown Act violation. So we will, we'll BCC you every time we communicate with you, so you don't buy the state, press reply all. But make sure you do not communicate via email, via text, via Facebook, via anything with more than one other board member on an issue. If you have any questions on that concept. Okay, and again, it's hard, because you want to come, you know, knowing where things are going and being prepared. But you can be prepared with staff, I want to be prepared with staff, we are not, we are not under the Brown Act. The Brown Act does not apply to us. So every one of you should, should go to Adam and ask a question, if you have a question. And Adam should be, feel free to fill each and every one of you on an issue, should it come up. What Adam will not do is tell you what the other board members are thinking. Because then he has created a Brown Act violation. So, but we, for you, we're not under the Brown Act, it will create a problem for you. So again, be aware, if somebody's trying to do an act, you, members of the public can do it all the time. I've had members of the public that will call each board member and figure out how they're going to vote on an issue, and then put it on Facebook. And now all of a sudden, you see it, and you're, you know how your fellow board members are going to vote. So again, it's, it's very important just to be aware of that and be very careful on how you handle it going forward. Any Brown, but I do recommend taking Brown Act training, because it will go through that, you know, two hundred and seventy-six exceptions to the rule. But we will handle, but, you know, we handle the agenda, we make sure everything is noticed correctly, that's our job. Again, I just want you to be very clear, not to talk about county business, sorry, district business outside of the notice meeting. Okay, and also public record, which is the, you know, where staff in my office spends the majority of our time, because people, the public has the right to access any document within our jurisdiction. So be very, it's very important that we maintain our documents and that we provide them to the public when they ask for it. I'm finding the public is asking for a lot of stuff as a mechanism to stop functioning of jurisdictions. That they take all of that time in public records. Unfortunately, they have the right to do that, but we can, we have to stack on it if they do it a lot. But for you, I want you to remember that everything that's produced here is a public record. So, you know, the notes you're taking today during the meeting, those are a public record. There's, you know, anything, any time you communicate via your phone, via text, jurisdictional issue, that is district, that's public record. So just remember, everything you do is public record related to the jurisdiction that can and should be produced if necessary. Any questions on that? Okay.
Is there a FOIA request? Is there like a time limit on those?
Yes, so we're not under FOIA in state, we're under California Public Records Act request, which is the same concept.
Thank you.
But it, there is a requirement that when we do get a request, that we let them know within ten days if we're able to produce the documents. So we have a ten day requirement to let them know if we're able to produce them. We can request a fifteen day extension on that if the records are not accessible, or we're going to have trouble getting the records. Doesn't it mean we have to produce them in ten days? We just have to let them know how long it's going to take them us to produce them by ten days.
Is there a time limit then on producing those records?
It's a reasonable time period.
What's considering a reasonable?
That's the question that gets litigated all the time. You, so typically, it's like a meet and confer, so you'd say, it's going to, you know, these records are stored in an offsite location in Texas. It will take us six weeks to get them. And they come, can come back to you and say, six weeks is too long. And then you can say, well, we can try to do it in five weeks, and then negotiate with the timeframe. But courts have typically said that if you set a reasonable timeframe to produce them, you are okay. So we, and we look at just making sure we can explain and justify to a court why it's going to take the time period today. Okay, the next thing I want you to keep an eye on is trainings, and we talked about that. There are two required trainings that every board member needs to take within six, six months of taking office. The first one is an ethics training, we call it AV1234 training. It basically goes over your obligations and your requirements for contracting and conflicts of interest and ethical rules. Has everyone taken their AV1234 training? Yes.
That's a choice.
That's AV1234, okay, ethics.
We're getting there.
We're getting there, okay, excellent. Make sure you do it, and make sure your, see your staff does it as well. Anybody who filled out Form 700 for your jurisdiction should be doing it. It is required by law, and the FPPC will fine you if you do not have that done it. So six months within taking office, and then every two years you are required to do it. Same thing with sexual harassment training. All staff is required to take sexual harassment training, including the board, within six months of your appointment, and then every two years thereafter. So those are the required ones, but there is a lot of recommended ones. And I will highlight that there is a lot of trainings out there if you're interested. The California Special District Association has a plethora of trainings on all sorts of issues. And what we talked about, purchasing policy. They've got long trainings on what, what makes a good purchasing policy. They've got trainings on everything that you can imagine. So I would recommend that if you have questions, reach out to see if there is a training on it, because there might be a lot of information out there that will help you. But I do always recommend that you look at doing Brown Act and governance as well, which is, you know, we're doing governance today, so we've got that going for us. But always looking at doing Brown Act also. So, and I also encourage you to remember that it's important for your staff to be well trained. Because you're asking them to be the subject matter experts in what they do. And again, going towards the trust component of it. If you're going to, if you're going to put your faith in them to do the job for the people, it's really important that they're given the resources to do those jobs. So it is a really good idea when you're looking at budget time to think about, is it appropriate to get our staff any additional or specialized training? All right, just jumping through, because I know we're, we're getting close to probably getting hungry. But you are required to do your online financial and compensation reports. You have to submit to the state comptroller, and are also required to have them online, which again, I love that you do, that is pretty awesome. And then conflict of interest, which we talked about earlier, is a train you're supposed to be, you're supposed to engage in. But also to remember that everything you do is governed by these rules that do require you to make sure you don't have a conflict of interest when you act, and to make sure you do not have a financial interest when you act. And I just kind, I want to remind you of that, you know, in small communities, it is a huge problem that everybody is related to everybody else, or everybody else was, you know, somebody's high school teacher. When you have a conflict, you need to make sure you recuse yourself from a vote, even if, you know, even if you, even if you really want to vote on it. If you have an actual conflict where you are, have a relation with somebody who's coming up for a vote, or something of that nature, make sure you feel free to recuse yourself. When you accuse yourself, you leave the room, you don't just say, I recuse myself, you say, I recuse myself, why? And you actually walk out of the room when that vote's being taken. Also to remember that if you have what we call a 1090 violation, meaning you have a financial interest in a contract that is coming before this board, you can't just recuse yourself and walk out. You have to disclose that, and then the jurisdiction can't enter into that contract. So for example, if you own a roofing company and this building needs to get roofed, and you bring forward a proposal as a board member to, you have your company roof this building, you can't just step out of the room. You can't have that contract at all. Because you, nothing that you guys have a financial interest in can be contracted for. Important to remember that. Okay, so the California State District Association has some tips for board members, and I thought it was kind of interesting, so I put it in there. So again, you're kind of, it kind of a common sense, but it's really kind of, for me, even when I was reading them, I thought, this is actually really good to remember. So you are able to impose the action. So when we come here and have debates and say, I don't agree with it, that is appropriate. Once there is a majority vote, and it goes to implementation, you need to get behind it. Because that is, while you can disagree with it in, in concept, once the board, the majority votes, it is the law, and we need to afford on it. So if, even if you oppose something, that once the vote is over, you need to move on. Do your homework, we talked about that a lot. I'm a huge proponent of making sure you have every piece of information you need in order to make your vote. You can't do your job unless you have everything you need. And I understand there's, there's, this, this is a very talented board that has a lot of experience, so you may be asking for more information than a lot of board asks for, and I encourage you to do that. Always ask for information, always do your homework ahead of time. That is appropriate, and that is part of your job. Don't play gotcha. So I've been watching a lot of Senate hearings lately, because they're kind of hilarious. And you see, they play this game of gotcha, where they get their staff on the scam, and then they start asking them, you know, questions, like, to try and make them look dumb, right? Or try to make something bad happen. That's not what we're going to do. Your job is not to, to try to trick your staff, your, your job is to support your staff. And so if you have something that you need your staff to do wrong, I have no problem with bringing that publicly, but I request that you give your staff a heads up, and you make sure that they're aware and they have the ability to appropriately respond. Because you don't want to ever put your, your staff or your jurisdiction in a position where we're playing, we're, we're fighting each other in trouble. Listen first, second, again, it's really good to get the information. I, I worked in so many small communities, I can't tell you how impactful the gossip world is. I mean, sometimes it is way more powerful than the actual facts. Because everybody here is passing this information and passes it along. So when you have a question, again, listen, listen to the answers, listen to the actual information. Always ask, I think the kids hold now receipts, always ask for proof. If you, if you don't believe something, and you want, you want jurisdiction, you want evidence of it, just appropriate ask for it. Have, like, I always say that if you, if you don't bring my legal opinion, and you want me to provide you with a court's documents, let me know, I, I will, I'd be happy to. I'd love to show you why I'm right. And so always, always, always ask for that. Build on your expertise, as I say, if you guys have some really smart people on this board who have some really unique careers, build on that, don't be afraid to, to rely on your subject matter experts. Same with your staff, don't be afraid to rely on your subject matter experts. Then again, stick to principles, not position, that goes back to you are one of five when the vote is done. Whatever the vote is, is going to be the vote of this jurisdiction. And while I agree, never do anything that you believe is unethical, never do anything that you believe is wrong, make sure you understand why you're voting for it, but once it's been decided, you need to move on. So that, that's their, their suggestions. Okay, and then I have my own suggestions to add to it. This is stuff I kind of want to remind you not to do, which is, you know, micromanage. We spent a lot of time talking about that. You know, you can micromanage your jurisdiction to death. It is really important that you remember that you are looking at it from a policy standpoint and from a governance standpoint. You're not looking at it from an execution standpoint. Make sure you don't direct staff on your own, that is really hard, because we all come from areas where we can say something and have it happen. Here, you can't say anything without having two other people agree with you. And it's very hard when you, you know, something is upsetting to you, or you want something to change, and you, you go into Adam and you say, Adam, I want you to change this, and puts Adam in a situation where he's like, I can't, because I don't have full direction of the board to do that. So instead of trying to direct anything on your own, the best way to do it is say, I have concerns regarding this, and ask him to bring it back to the full board for consideration and discussion. Because he can't, he legally can't do anything based off any one of you asking him to do it. And it's really hard to remember that, because again, we are, we're workers, we want things to get done, we hate how slow government is, let's just fix it. But it puts your staff in a very bad, bad position. Don't manage day-to-day operations, again, that is your general manager's responsibility. Don't breach confidentiality, there are, and we, and we talked about public records, ninety percent of what we have in our jurisdiction is open to the public, but there are certain things that are not, one of them being kind of employee relations matters, attorney-client privilege, anything that's discussed in like a closed session. When you, when we say something is confidential, it's legally confidential, because otherwise, everything is available to the public. So if we say this is legally confidential, please do not breach that confidentiality, because it will hurt the district.
And I just, I just want to point out, Margaret, so I think maybe only, I'm not sure about Wanda, but I think only Chrissy and Susan might have been the ones in closed sessions so far. I'm not sure that Andy and Mary and Wanda, I can't remember if you've ever been in closed session. We don't do a lot of closed sessions here?
Oh, Wanda does.
Okay, alright, okay, alright, my apologies. You know, typically, typically, the biggest reasons I'll come, I'll bring something to you in closed session, which closed session is, it's closed, so we would ask the public to leave, I would have a frank discussion with you, we might have, you know, Margaret or another attorney there, if it's, you know, one of our insurance cases.
We've had attorneys on the phone.
Exactly, and so, and that, that's why it's so important, because it's almost, almost always, not, this, these are not the only reasons, but almost always going to be litigation-related or employee issue-related. So that's why the confidentiality is so important, and I actually do have, probably on your next meeting, ironically enough, probably on your next meeting, we are going to have a closed session. So that's, that's the reason for that.
So anything that's discussed in that, we talked about, otherwise, actually, there's a penal code section, that says if you reveal anything from closed sessions, it's a misdemeanor. Now, in the state of California, no DA's are prosecuted. Like, if any DA is going to do it, it's going to be your DA, so like, let's just hear the whole thing. But, but typically, we do, we do remind you to really keep those things confidential. And again, don't think it's your job to oversee staff, or even oversee the public, that is putting too much pressure on you guys. You came in here to do, you know, what's equivalent to a volunteer position, to help your community, and you need to, and you need to kind of take that pressure off yourselves, that your job is to make everything run perfectly. That's staff's job to make everything run perfectly, your job is to make sure people are the right people and the right policies are in place. So give your, give yourself a little bit of grace on that. Okay, so roles of the general manager, just quickly, we'll go through them, next slide. Actually, next slide is, my, see, I can tell I looked at your, your, my, my full patience on it. Okay. So, next one, the general role of your general manager. Again, I just think it's really important to remember kind of where, who everyone is and what their place is. So, he is supposed to develop and deliver reports to keep you well informed of the operation and the goal status. We've talked about that a lot today, I feel like that was a really good discussion, we've got some ideas on how to continue to do that. And I feel like where I'm hearing the concerns are, is that you want more information, and as I told you, I am, I am here for that. I encourage you to want as much information as you want. But again, ask for it in advance, understand limitations of staff time, and, and again, make sure that you kind of have those policies in place, so that he knows what his expectations are in terms of delivery of goals. Other things is his job is providing recommendations. He should not be coming to you with anything without having a recommendation. You know, you don't pay him to just give you all the ideas and let you sort through them. He is your subject matter expert, he is the one doing the research. When he comes to you and says, here's your options, he's going to give you the options, and he's going to say, here's what I recommend, and that is what you pay him for. Again, you don't have to agree with him, but you put him in that place for a reason, because you want him to give you those, those goals, and you want to not have it be your responsibility to figure those out. So again, when he brings something to you, it should always have proposals. It shouldn't just be, I think this policy is messed up, what do you guys want to do to fix it? He's going to come to you and say, I think this policy is messed up, I think we need to remove this section, and we need to move this around and add this section in here. His job is to maintain and advancing operation of districts, so as I said, you set the policies, you set the strategic plan, he executes them. He's the one that takes those directives and, and puts them out, and, and makes sure they operate. And his goal is to move this district forward. I mean, if you set, if you set some good strategic goals and say, here's what the goal is for our jurisdiction, his job is to say, I accept the challenge and I'm going to execute these goals. So that is your role of a general manager. Again, his job is also, and then the next slide, his job is also to direct staff, and he makes sure he does hiring and supervision and evaluation, just like, all that stuff falls under with him. So, in addition to carrying your vision forward, he's keeping the lights on and everything lighting here. Direction, if you want to give direction to staff, if you don't like how something is happening, you don't give direction to the staff, you give the direction to Adam to give the direction to staff. Always remember chain of command, and the moment board members start coming and directing staff how to operate, you've just, one, shown that you don't have confidence in your general manager to do this job, and two, you put staff in a very bad position, because they don't report to you, so they don't know who to answer to. So if you've got issues, absolutely bring them to Adam's attention, that's what he's here for, and you should at all times. Next one, what should you expect from staff? You should expect them to communicate, as I said, I'm a huge proponent that you are deserving of every piece of information that you want. If, if you want updates, if you want information, you can get it. You are, you can expect that they are going to execute policy, so help you create it, their job is to write it, their job is to know it, and execute policy. Your, your expectations, if they follow your expectations, if you set certain priorities, they're supposed to follow it. You have to have an expectation that they report to the general manager, that the general, that general manager is going to direct them. And you should have an expectation that they're also looking to the future. Again, we're going past survival mode, that's kind of the theme of today, we're going past survival mode, and it's good to encourage and to empower your staff to not just try to keep the lights on, but to think what this is going to look like in five years. Because again, you have experts here, you have people that you're paying as your subject matter experts, use them as best you can. Alright, that is all I have for you guys today, if you have any questions.
Margaret, thank you, this has been very comprehensive and well organized, so I really appreciate this information.
Well, and again, I'm not going anywhere, you all signed my contracts, you're stuck with me for at least a year, so don't be afraid, we need to go home and digest all of this. Because I did throw a lot at you today. If you have more questions, please feel free to reach out, we, you know, I'm happy to talk about them.
We can reach out directly to you if we have a question?
Yes, I'm looking at your general manager, yes, you do, I, I report directly to you. Let me just tell you how I operate, and if you come to me with something that is not classified as confidential and you ask me a question, I will respond to it, but I typically will let every other board member know the answer as well, because it's important. It's important that everybody knows it, there's, there are certain things that are confidential, like if you call me about a personnel matter, or you call me about litigation, but if you ask me, hey, I'm curious about what this means or what this law says, I will respond, you know, I'll respond to you, but I'll make sure that Adam's in part of that, and so that he can disseminate that to everybody.
I do think that the board should probably discuss and decide for itself what a norm would be for contacting Margaret. For instance, it's very common in other jurisdictions that, you know, the board will agree that they are all going to go through the board chair if they want to contact the attorney, rather than have a free-for-all with all five people reaching out. I don't particularly care either way, Margaret works for you. But you might want to have that discussion, whether, whether you're okay with more of a free-for-all, or anyone can contact her at any time, because as nice as Margaret is, she is billing you when she calls. Or, or when, or whether you want to kind of have it controlled a little bit more, and you want to go through the board chair if you want something from the attorney.
Yeah, I think it's, typically, if you reach out to me with a quick question, I won't bill for you because I am nice. But, you know, and, and we can do it that way, if it's one, something that's going to require research, or something that's going to require me to actually, you know, put a bill together, then, then probably I would want to make sure that your general manager is aware of it in your chair. So we can, we can do it that way if that works for you. Okay, well, thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Margaret, do you, I don't know what your schedule is like, we have lunch, and so, how about we take a little break for lunch? And then, do you have time to stick around, maybe? I'm not sure what kind of strategic planning discussion we're going to have yet.
I am, I'm free till three, if that, if that, so I've got three more hours.
I think we should be, I think that should be very specific, yeah, cool. So how about we take a little break, and we have sandwiches over here and some fruits, and we can get your waters, or anything else?
Hello there?
So.
Thank you for asking, Mr. Foreman, we're part of the control, we're going to go with your request.
Do you have the copy of that plans and specs for the safety center?
Oh, okay. So, okay.
There's about sixty miles outside here, I'm not doing it.
So I have no idea what Rob might have told you about generator, he's been in all the same meetings that I have, so I have no idea what he told you, but it is true that we have never planned for a diesel generator, because the original plan, we got a grant, we were supposed to design a wood biomass, okay? So the plan was always have that there to provide more electricity and heat to the public safety center. Once it became about, a month ago, maybe, six weeks ago, maybe, it became clear that that's not the best site for a wood biomass facility. And so that's when, we had already planned for solar panels on the safety center, and that's when we made the decision to add industrial batteries. So if we don't have a generator for a second, but there definitely is, we will, we would never build that kind of facility without that power. So we will have, I believe it's
Oh, that is okay, I need that.
Plus the panels.
The little flash should come down, but it didn't.
One of the things that
Still got batteries.
Is it? When, I mean, we had a power base that had a lot of power added, and we had the snow layer, it would have protected it.
Maybe seventy-one in here.
So working, so I know that there's options where you could plug like, have a portable generators. As long as that's all, like, as a, as a, someone who went through that and has a little PTSD from that, just having the able to like plug.
There is an option, I believe, that we have security power, so there is an idea option. We're not going to have a permanent stationary diesel generator, yes. You're welcome, yeah.
I can't come back with my notes, need the, we, darn it. I do love when the gates do, please, imagine you.
No, I don't.